You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cape Fear. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched with the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Monday, October 22 Fayetteville City Council meeting. At this time, we'll ask that Pastor Archie Smith from Spread the Word Ministries would come forth. Give us our invocation. We ask that you rise for that and if you will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Dear wise and loving Father in heaven, we want to first say thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we all need to fulfill our individual callings, for substance and friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing our appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to accept and embrace you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boldness and gracious nature. Your word declares that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray that our mayor, Mayor Colvin, and for the varying levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council, I'm asking that you would grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even where there is honest disagreement, and for personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work around our beloved city of Fayetteville. It's in your most blessed name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Pastor Smith, good to see you. Met you earlier this month at the Coffee with Clergymetal. Tell the city a little bit about yourself and your ministry.
Absolutely, sir. My name is Archie Smith. I'm originally from the city of Colleen, Texas. I planted a small, emerging city church here in the city of Fayetteville. We have a mandate to call, challenge, and change. That's our mantra. We want to call people from all walks of life, different racial backgrounds, different socioeconomic classes. Call them into a relationship with the Lord. We want to challenge their faith. Not just get you saved or into a relationship, but cultivate and develop a relationship through discipleship, through the word of God, and through worship. And then we want to see change, not only in them, but the people that they're connected to. And not only those people, individual families, but our community that we sit in and ultimately the city that we serve in.
Thank you, sir. That sounds exciting. Welcome to the city.
Thanks, sir.
At this time, I will refer to Councilmember Jensen. We have a special guest with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have Harmony Granderson. She is a senior at Jackbread High School and she, I know, finally, right? And she is our member tonight from the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. She's our representative.
Hello.
Hello.
I am Harmony Granderson, the Community Service Chair for the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. And I would like to tell you that FCYC traveled to Rocky Mount, North Carolina, for the State Youth Council Service Learning Day Conference, which was held on October 13th. Here, FCYC worked on two service projects out in the community of Rocky Mount. FCYC is also excited to have our very first social outing to the baseball launch party on November 4th, where we can enjoy the new entertainment opportunity in downtown Fayetteville. Thank you.
Thank you. And, oh, yeah, 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 I've got them. Yeah. This time, we'll ask that Councilmember Jensen, are you handling this for Ms. Hill?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Gladys Hill, if you would, come to the podium. And Ms. Hill has an annual event every year, Light Fayetteville Pink, in recognition of Breast Cancer Month. And Ms. Jensen and Ms. Hill have some information they'd like to share with us.
Good evening. My name is Gladys Hill. And I started this event last year because I didn't know what to do. So I decided I wanted to light the city pink. So I stopped at Mid-South Lighting. They donated me the pink light bulbs. So last year, I raised $4,200 to donate to Cape Fear Hospital Friends of the Cancer Center. So I'm doing it again this year. So I went a step further and I had t-shirts made, Light Fayetteville Pink. The light bulbs are $5 each. T-shirts are $15 each. Again, all money goes to Cape Fear Hospital Friends of the Cancer Center.
You can buy, you can get your light bulbs.
You can go to Mid-South Lighting on Sycamore Dairy Road to pick up your light bulbs. They have some t-shirts there also. And I'm like the medicine man. I have them in my car, too.
So last year, Mr. Mayor, I know that you were there with us when we lit the Market House up pink. We're going to try to do that again. We're still working on that as we speak. Last year, I think we were, as Mayor and I were out there, and the Cumberland County Health Better Hospital, Cape Fear Hospital Board was there with us. Their foundation was with us. So we will have more information on that, and we'd like to thank you for all that you do for us.
And, all right, and just like to note that Councilmember Waddell had actually sent the request in to invite Ms. Hill. So Ms. Waddell, would you like to add anything to this? Ms. Jensen, how's your cover?
I am so sorry. I was with her last year. I am so sorry.
Yeah. And we, we, and Ms. Hill sold me a whole case of pink light bulbs last year, so. I've got a lot of pink to light up. We'd like to also thank and acknowledge the folks at Five Star Entertainment last year for providing LED services. So we're looking to some local vendors to help us out with that this year. And Councilmember Jensen and Ms. Hill and Ms. Waddell will give more information soon as we have that and the dates that that's scheduled. But we look forward to it. It was a great event last year. Look forward to it this year. So can we give Ms. Hill and her group a round of applause? At this time, we would ask that Words of Essence and Young Warriors Praise Team, are they present? If you all would meet me at the podium.
We've got some very exciting news here. The Word of Essence performed Friday, October 5, 2018, in Durham, North Carolina, at the 13th Annual Gospel Showcase, and they won first place. Yeah, North Carolina. So you gotta, you know, look at these young men and women up here, future leaders of our community. So what the mayor had done is he has a certificate of excellence presented to Words of Essence in recognition of winning first place at the 13th Annual Gospel Showcase in Durham, North Carolina.
Can y'all do a praise dance for us right now? No, just kidding.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. They reached out to me and shared the good news. And I think it's always befitting that we brag on the great talent that we have here in Fayetteville, particularly when it's our young people. So proud of you. Thank you. Keep up the good work, okay? Thank you for making us proud. All right, so council, as we move down to business at this time, ask that item 5.0 is approval of the agenda. And at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
And that the minutes be approved?
The agenda.
Agenda, I'm sorry.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Wright. There's a second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. And Mr. City Manager, I need to get someone to look at my green button. It keeps getting stuck, so. It's not an automatic yes for everything. All right. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on consent?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.04. I would like an explanation for that and then a separate vote. I'm sure we'll approve it, but that's my motion.
I'll second.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Chris to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.04, seconded by Councilmember Cullerton. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilman Hare?
Oh, you've got button problems, too. Yes, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries.
All right, item 6.04. Councilman Chris?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted the public to know, this item 6.04 is adoption of a special revenue fund project ordinance to appropriate the 2018 Health Out of School Time Program Grant. This is normally a $25,000 grant, but the significance of this is such that I want it, the citizens of Fayetteville, to know what's happening here. This is money that's used, in fact, last year, from June 11th to July 27th. The city served 21,331 meals to children during the out-of-school portion of our summer. That's very, very significant. That's about 600 meals a day. That takes a lot of coordination from Parks and Rec and our rec centers. It takes a lot of volunteers, a lot of people in the city to help do this, and I'm certainly hopeful that we will exceed the 21,331 meals this coming summer. This is in conjunction with a lot of churches and other organizations that expresses our concern as to what our children are eating when school is out. There are some of our schools that own a 98% breakfast and lunch programs. This means then that we have a lot of people who are below the poverty line, and so we share their concerns about feeding these children during the summertime. Having said that, then, I move for the adoption of 6.04, the adoption of the Special Revenue Fund Project Ordinance 2019-4 to appropriate the 2018 Health Out of School Time Program Grant.
Thank you. Councilmember Chris, there's a motion to approve the grant as stated. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second, Councilmember Cullerton. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. I'd also like to say, you know, in addition to Councilmember Chris's acknowledgement of a great job at Parks and Rec, we challenged our colleagues on the county commissioner to the Food Fight. That is the Second Harvest Food Bank's fundraiser to address food insecurities in our community. And so we have a lot of people that that will help. And so we asked that our counties on the, our colleagues on the county commissioner's side would meet us with the challenge and purchase the tickets for, I think, 2,500 from each board. We've already sent the letter of intent to do so, and we will wait on your receipt of our challenge. So it's going to a good cause, but thank you. Item 7.01, Public Arts Commission Annual Report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. I'm Kathy Greggs. I'm currently the chair for the Public Arts Committee again this year. This is my second term. And I just wanted to give our annual report. But before I give my annual report, I just want to say thank you for all the response that I did receive during the Red Cross for Hurricane Florence. I was a disaster responder here, and I want to say thank you for my call, when I called Cullerton and the mayor. I know I called you early in the morning, sorry. But I was able to get things done for the shelters that was flooding at the time, as well as Ms. Waddell. So I just want to give that shout out to thank you for answering my call. Yes, so we met this time last year, three times last year. As you can see, there is some artwork as you go downtown that has been moved, and that is because some leases have been up for 11 months. And we also had added our Phase 3 progress right now, which was 20 pieces of artwork. We only approved 20 pieces, even though there was 100 considered. But due to the $15,000 that is given for those leases, there were some artworks that was not able to get approved through our council. We're also looking into the Public Arts Master Plan, which is given to us by the Arts Council Committee. We haven't approved that yet. We're supposed to meet Thursday. Hopefully, we can approve it. We had some actual questions about leasing, as well as some artwork that was given to us free that we did receive. However, it was donated, but there were some areas of permits, so we had to address those issues. There are six members on the board as well. We'll be meeting again Thursday, so hopefully, we can get this master plan approved. Some of the artwork, as you can see, is on the screen, that we had already approved for Phase 2. We're currently in Phase 3. Like I just said, there was 100 pieces, but we only approved 20. Some of the artwork that we approved here in front of City Council, I mean, in front of the City Hall building, is one piece that we approved. But then we decided to move it from where the Arts Council wanted to put it at because of the cluster. We didn't want it to be where people could not walk into the City Hall. So we did move some pieces in our last meeting. Hopefully, we can get everything approved and we can finish this phase, as well as the actual master plan for 2019 from the Arts Council here in Fayetteville. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to commend you all, as well as the Arts Council, for the public art. I mean, it's a beautiful thing. It was something that kind of desired and coveted from traveling to other communities, and it's good to see it here in our city. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the report from the Public Arts Commission.
All right. Have a motion by Councilmember Chris to accept the report. There's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. All right, item 8.01, the review of the proposed development agreement between the city of Fayetteville, Broadwell Land Company, for the proposed 254-acre development located on the southwest quadrant of Elliott Bridge Road, Elliott Farm Road, and Ramsey Street. Mr. Newton, oh, pardon me. Public hearings. Got ahead of myself tonight. Mr. Newton, before you come, let me open up the public hearing if it would. The public hearings, individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. And at this time, Mr. Newton?
So before we begin that public hearing, if you'll allow me to go ahead and make a presentation to you, Mayor, and members of council, on what you have in front of you. This request that you have, the next two items that you have in front of you, continue what you've already taken one action on, which was to look at the initial parallel zoning that was under the consent item. What you have in front of you now will be the public hearing looking at the development agreement. And that then, the next public hearing that you'll hold after you take action or consideration of this item, will be the consideration of the petition to annex the 254 acres. The location of this, most of you are familiar. You've seen this multiple times. It's on the northern portion of your existing municipal influence area, just about three miles from your current location. The entire project is within three miles as the crow flies. It's an area that you've identified as your northernmost current boundary to that municipal influence area. The development agreement contains these six points. It's to look at making sure that the annexation is consistent with the city council prior actions, which this is. It's within the municipal influence area, and identifies the spots of future annexation areas. It is a development agreement that's designed to have the current development standards remain stable. They're looking to do a project over the next 15 or so years. The development agreement provides that. It's what they call a vesting, and it's a vesting of what's already been approved in the city, excuse me, in the county in 2015, and it's upgrading it to city regulations also. It does apply to the entirety of the project area, as the council had directed back in February, and it provides a level of concurrence for that. What the development agreement does is it's an opportunity to look and make sure that all things are being coordinated for a large project. It allows for off-site water and sewer extensions by the Public Works Commission. As a little bit of background, September of 2015 is when Cumberland County approved a mixed-use project. That project continues with or without annexation. The question really in front of you is whether you want it in the city. You've asked us, and your policies in the past have been, yes, you do, and you want us to work through that. That's what you've indicated multiple times. Policy 150.2 requires if they're receiving utilities, water and sewer, in particular sewer, that's in the MIA of the city, that they have to be annexed in. When we brought this item to you in February of this year, the city said, hey, we don't want to do a partial. We want all of it to come in. We don't want to look at just the first phase being waived and then the rest come in. We want all of that. So what we were tasked to do and what we worked on from March to October is we worked on those. on those technical issues. We worked on getting those things in place. Tonight's decision then is a decision to annex, which is your next public hearing, the development agreement, which is now, and the initial zoning that came in front. There's a question of how do you know what's going to be built out? The answer to that is they don't, but they work on what they think will happen over the next 15 years, 15 to 20 years. This is the development build-out projection, and what you see in it, the first year plus, it's working on the utilities. The next one is the start of Phase One, 118 units residential, and putting in place the rest of the internal public improvements and protecting the open space. The next one begins Phase Two of a residential. And then you see by year 2023 to '25 is when they're projecting to start the Phase Three. Those three phases comprise 350 units. Their projection right now is seven years or so from now, in 2025, they'll be looking at some form of multifamily on the project. And they have a 12-year build-out beginning in July of 2022, when they expect to start commercial activities. Of course, that then becomes market-dependent. They have this shown as continuing until the year 2033. Development agreements are one of the ways that you do vest property in the state of North Carolina. The statute refers to how you do that. It's a way to protect the rights of the development by the developer's standpoint, and also give the public and the government side a way to figure out how to best plan for it. We cover that state statute in our Unified Development Ordinance section that's cited here for you. It has three standards. It says it needs to be at least 25 acres of developed property, has to exceed the phasing not more than 20 years, and you have to take a look at, begin to understand what the capital improvements are going to be. All of those three things have been done with this. That information is also in more detail of your packet. Now, the development agreement that we have in our UDO refers to these specific bullet points that you see in place. There are eight points that it has to be used sparingly, and it's used when the city is looking at how are you going to handle certain things. So it has to be a large-scale, long-term project. It has to be one where you have to coordinate long-term commitment of public and private investments. It is one where there are potential community impacts and opportunities, negatives and positives. You have to be able to look at those items. And you have to be able to then integrate, and this is another way of saying the same thing, but it is the way we've got it in our ordinance, integrate the capital facilities, planning, the financials, and the schedules. All that said, no one really knows exactly how this project will develop over, in year 10 precisely, but the best we can do is we put some things in place. The development agreement continues that you have to have an opportunity to create a stable pattern for the person developing so they know that in two years or five years, whoever is seated on the council at that point in time can't just arbitrarily change what's in place. That's what the development agreement does for them. For us, on the government side, it allows us to look at and schedule what improvements should be needed. While we have in here that it has non-traditional development options, this is a mixed-use project that has, is in a traditional way. The flexibility is something to be negotiated, which we don't have a lot of flexibility on it, but we have worked with them in bringing forward the project that they already have approved in the county. And it also talks about planned consistency. So what is planned consistency then? This is one that has already been county-approved. We've added standards of sidewalks, talked about sidewalks being important. They've agreed to sidewalks on both sides of their streets. There have been issues about stormwater. They have worked through and continue to work through the engineering department on creating a low-impact development for a portion of their project, which allows us to look at quantity and quality on it. The requirement for open space would be 34 acres. They show 58 acres. The idea of how that's protected then becomes one of the development plan and making sure those areas are carved. It becomes a part of this development agreement. In addition, the access points that have been identified by DOT remain. We've also made sure that we can look at the environmental concerns, wetlands and vegetation, as well as habitat. We know that there's an endangered bird that has shown within a mile of this area, so we protect an area that they could be located in. One of the issues that you would probably want to know is what happens in year 10 or year seven when things change? How do we deal with amendments? Well, we have that in our ordinance. It says first, it has to be mutual consent. It can't be unilateral on one side or the other. And if it's a major change, it goes through the same process that we're going through right now. It's another public hearing. If it's minor, that happens through a review by the city manager, and these are the points that have to be examined. No significant change in the use of the intensity or the design still has to be consistent with the purpose and goals of the city, comply with our ordinances, and have no adverse impact on public health, safety, and general welfare. Also written into the development agreement standards that we have in our UDO is that you have to have at least an annual review for compliance. We have all the regular things, but it also builds in another component. So with that, we've done what you've asked us to take a look at. We put together this. We are recommending the city council approve the development agreement, thus allowing the city attorney's office to finalize and the city manager to execute the development agreement. I would ask that if you have questions for me or the applicant, that you hold those until after the public hearing, and I'll be sitting right there.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, can you call your first speaker?
Now, we have one speaker for in favor and four in opposition. Our first speaker is Mr. Jonathan Charleston.
Mr. Charleston, how you doing?
Fine, Mayor. How are you? Mayor, members of council, my name is Jonathan Charleston, 201 Hay Street, downtown Fayetteville. I'm here on behalf of my client, Broadwell Land Company, and I believe the president of the company is here, Mr. Broadwell, and members of his team, his engineer and his vice president of business development. You know, tonight, I'm going to do what I'm not really customary, accustomed to doing, and that's just be brief. I guess you all agree with that.
Yes.
Okay. A couple of points I'd like to make is as follows. As your staff has indicated, the terms of the development agreement were heavily negotiated, and I think that all of the terms that the city council expressed an interest in having in those, the document is there, and I won't go over that. We'll point out just a couple of things. This is a very large mixed-use development, and I believe the first of its kind for the city of Fayetteville. The project itself will serve as the northern boundary of the city of Fayetteville. And what's interesting, it will create a very close relationship with and to the Research Triangle region, which is a very, very, very positive thing for our city. As we know, the Research Triangle region is one of the fastest-growing and most sought-after in terms of quality of life, so it associates Fayetteville with something very positive. And I will say also that, as was mentioned and pointed out in the presentation by the city staff, is that this project has been very well thought out, and the project is being developed in a way that I will say is right-sized. It's not being developed to the density level that it could be, which I think is something that's very good for our city. But we're asking that city council approve the development agreement. It has already been executed by Broadwell Land Company, and what I like to do is reserve the remainder of my time if I can do that. I know we have some folks in opposition, but if the council has any questions they'd like to ask, I'd like to make myself available, but I don't want to go over something that the staff has presented, so we don't want to be redundant.
I'll defer to the city attorney on that.
Yeah, since he's the only side in favor, so I guess. Counsel, did you all have any? Well, we'll ask questions after we close the public hearing. All right, Mr. Charleston, don't go too far. I think we have got a couple of questions for you. All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call your next speaker.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jimmy Jones.
Good evening, members of council.
Good evening, sir.
Any of you folks live out that way? You don't live that far out. You're not where I live.
Can you state your name and address for us, sir?
Jimmy Jones. I have lived on the north side of town since I was born, actually, right here. Pittman's Hospital, been on the north side of town ever since, right where 295.
What's your address, Mr. Jones?
Jim.
Your address, sir.
106 Benville Drive. I'm the second street house on the right when you turn in. We're in the middle of growth. That's understandable. We, all of us here is against this tonight, understand we're going to grow. That's understandable. We want to know how it's going to grow, how it's going to affect us. We already know from listening, talking, trying to find out, Ramsey Street's going to be widened. Our part out there, which is two lanes right now, is going to be widened at some point in time, but there's no money with DOT to do that anytime soon. This property out there is right out there where there's two lanes of traffic. Right now, the hearings around our property is that they're going to use one of our streets as a thoroughfare back to this property. We're not real pleased with that, understanding at the same time, you're still going to grow. We're still going to put places out there. We are very concerned about apartments and multifamily housing. Apartments are not a good way to go in the type of housing that we have out there. If that's a problem for someone to see, look where you've got apartments added into nice housing areas now. We don't expect to be treated a whole lot different than anybody else or how you would like to be, but we do want you to know our concerns. After four years of my wife talking to the Department of Transportation, we now are getting a turn lane at our street. Is that turn lane the real reason we're getting it, or is it because of the idea of putting a thoroughfare back to these new houses? That's what I really want to know. That's what these people want to know. We want to know, do we really need to stay where we're at? Sure, at some point in time, you're going to annex our street. Understandable, too. You're going to raise our taxes, but is our property value going to go down because of having 200, 300, whatever it is, apartments sitting back here behind us? I haven't heard much conversation about the wetlands that's already being cut up back there, or the red-headed woodpecker that has his homes right there in my backyard from time to time and some other houses out there, too. I don't think it's a bad idea to build more houses. That's fine. I'd like to have a new one, too, one day, maybe. But I've been at mine for 20-some years now, and I'd like to stay there. I understand the houses are coming. Please understand that we want control of our properties. Having said that, help us in do that. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Dennis DeLong.
Good evening. How are you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Hey, sir.
Councilmembers? My name is Dennis DeLong, and I reside at 7571 Ramsey Street, which is right at the top of the neighborhood where Jimmy was just speaking from, where the DOT is doing work that he just mentioned. First of all, I'd like to state that I strongly oppose any annexation whatsoever, and I will do everything I can to stop it if it proceeds, every avenue that I can possibly legally take. That is my intention. A couple of concerns that I have are the same that Mr. Jones just addressed, as far as how vague they are in the descriptions of what's going on. Also, I have done some investigating of my own, and I have been in contact with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game. Starting with the project that's ongoing with the DOT right in front of there, they failed to get the proper permits for the wildlife before they started the project, and I'm wondering if the builders have done the same for the wetlands down there. I got that information today, this afternoon, from U.S. Fish and Game. Secondly, on July the 8th of 2015, Pat McCrory signed into law the Hunting Heritage Act. By the city, trying to annex that, you're going to be taking away my rights as a hunter, and I will fight that as well. Because if you do that, the city has ordinances that you can't discharge firearms. There's 200 and something acres around all of that that I hunt and have for 40 years. And that's basically what I have to say about all this, is that I totally oppose it, and I will take and do every means legally possible to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Paul Bracewell.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Paul Bracewell. I'm originally from Louisville, Kentucky. I now have lived in Fayetteville for three years. I live at 7028 Lower Court. I chose that home because I didn't want to live inside the city. I really enjoy Fayetteville, but I like to be able to drive into Fayetteville, and it's slightly outside of Fayetteville. And as Jimmy said, development happens, growth happens. We all understand that. As they pointed out earlier, I believe it was 25 acres at a time that had to be designated, from what I was understanding, from what you were saying, it was 25 acres at a time. But yet, what's proposed for a project that is a lot of question marks as far as timelines, what's going to go there, how it's going to go, when it's going to go, is like 200 and something acres. So I think as a, as a council, you know, they already have land cleared over a lot of it, not the full extent of the 200 acres. To do it in smaller increments than what they're asking, I think, would be very responsible and do responsible growth as well. The multifamily houses, I am definitely against. It's, as was previously said, you know, you've got a nice neighborhood over there. Why you want to throw a bunch of apartments in it? I mean, they might be nice for the first 10, 20 years, but are they going to be nice over the next 30, 40? He mentioned the Research Triangle and that reaching, you know, people that want to live and work are working the Research Triangle and outside of it. You know, it's kind of far away from getting people that work in the Research Triangle. I mean, you got a few cities before that that, you know, I don't really see that you're going to draw a bunch of people that want to come live there from the Research Triangle. I think just the responsible thing, I think, would be to give them a little less land than they're asking for as, until it can be shown what exactly is going to go there and what kind of timeframe it's going to go in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our final speaker for this item is Mr. Waverly Sledge.
Good evening, Mayor, excuse me, City Council, men and women. I'm Waverly Sledge. I live at 160 Benville Drive. I moved into Fayetteville the 19th of January 1997. I'm U.S. Navy retired, been carrying a military ID card for 61-plus years. I came here tonight, and I'm hearing all of this about annexing that particular section. What about us? You sent me a one-page, two-sided letter showing a diagram. I guess it's five miles from that place. The diagram didn't include the complete subdivision. Now, I'm a country boy from Halifax County, raised by a sharecropper, not too smart. Raised by a sharecropper, not too smart, but I can read and write and understand English. All of this garbage that has been presented or presented by professionals, that's gonna affect me. The very least that you could do, in my opinion, is to give me a copy of what you have so that I can read it and get an understanding. Just a few days, I'll be seventy-nine years of age. I'm gonna have to redevelop. I'm gonna have to sell my house. The house, the property over there hasn't gone up much. But I have to explain to these people who are gonna buy my house, what's going on? I don't have a clue. I see a sign that says a hundred and eighteen units. What's a unit? Is it residential? Is it apartments? What is it? But the very least, we can't control you. All I can hear is annexing this two hundred and fifty-three acres. What about me? What are you gonna do? Have you been out there to see the problems that we have in our community? I've been told by people that built those houses out there or people who have come out and inspected those houses that we live in, they were improperly built. They shouldn't have been out there. We got water issues like crazy out there. Are we gonna get sewage? What are we gonna get except an additional taxes? I think as a citizen, I've been paying taxes for twenty-one years in this county. I came here for medical reasons. This is the closest place for me and my wife to go over to Fort Bragg and get treatment. But I need to know, what am I getting? You buy your annex in that place and you're gonna bypass me? That's not American to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Madam Clerk?
We have no further speakers.
Okay, so, uh, we will close the public hearing at this time, uh, and entertain questions. I see Councilmember Chris, but I, I wanted to make a statement, uh, just to make sure we're clear. Uh, we are not legally authorized to forcibly annex anybody that doesn't wanna be annexed. This, tonight's meeting is about voluntary annexation for a certain person who owns land and a certain property that has asked to come into the city of Fayetteville and for the benefits that come with that, which are sewer extensions. So, just wanna be clear that tonight is not about annexing property of anyone that doesn't voluntarily ask to do so. Just to make sure as we start this discussion that we're all on the same page. Okay, these are these folks' property and they've asked to voluntarily come in. So at this time, council, I think we do have a couple of questions. Councilmember Chris and Jensen?
Mr. Newton, would you please come up?
Yes, sir.
I wanna add some, I wanna gain some clarity here. First of all, the property we're discussing is in the county. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The request to develop that property has already been approved by the county. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So even if we do not annex it, we can't stop the project from going forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The reason the owners asked to be voluntarily annexed into the city is in order to get water and sewer. Is that correct?
Through PWC, correct.
If we denied that, they will still get water and sewer from Honeck County. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so we can't stop this project?
That's-
That was approved by the county?
That's right.
All right, and so if you're not living within that two hundred and fifty-four acres, I understand there will be some impact in terms of traffic and all of that. Has DOT decided on entrances and exits to that two hundred and fifty-four acre plot?
Yes, sir, they have. Additionally, if, if I may extend that, uh, with an answer, there is no proposal to connect to these locations that were identified as a, the term was, as a ma- a main thoroughfare. That is not what they've requested. In fact, wetlands separate those locations from occurring and DOT has established the locations. DOT has also called four oh one their Strategic Transportation Corridor and I've identified that as a location that they intend to have more road improvements done through the years.
And so if, as the owners have asked, they want PWC water and sewer, is that right?
That's correct.
And this will lead to economic growth and development in that area, is that right?
It certainly, it certainly-
Probably.
Creates that for this location. It also creates a corridor up through that area where you would expect that with the extension of water and sewer services that that would bring economic development.
And the final thing I want to clarify is, other than this two hundred and fifty-four acres, we have no plans to annex any other properties off North Ramsey. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And the state statute forbids us to forcibly annex any properties. Is that correct?
It doesn't, it doesn't say you can't force it, but it sure is awfully hard because they then have to, after you say that you're gonna do it, they have to vote that they agree to it. So you may as well say you can't force it. That's correct.
Thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I have a few questions and I don't know if Mr. Charleston is gonna be the one that has to answer it. My first question is, um, my understanding is the first phase that is going up is going to be houses. Is that correct?
That is correct. If you'll- In terms of the developer, their first activity that they'll be doing is the extension of, they're part of the utility work in, under the ground. And then the first phase of something that we see above the ground is the residential, a hundred and eighteen units.
And those units are residential homes?
Single-family residential.
Single-family homes. So then my next question is, what is, what is the price value or the home value that we're looking at those hundred and eighteen homes that are going in?
The, uh, price range for the homes that are gonna be in this development are from two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand.
Okay, so in the second phase, is that gonna continue on or is it gonna go, will that amount continue as the houses are being built, the house value? For phase two, 'cause I'm seeing that phase one has a hundred and eighteen units and phase two is gonna have a hundred and twenty units. The price of the homes are gonna be the same.
Price ranges are gonna run from a low of two hundred and fifty thousand to a maximum of around four hundred thousand dollars.
Through the whole neighborhood of all residential. Okay, okay, I didn't know if that was just phase one or phase two. Then, um, when you talked about the density level, when you talked about, will you kind of explain that for our, um, our constituents out here? And I guess what I could say is that you could make these houses closer together, but you're not, you're using more land? More yardage, I should say?
That's correct, Councilman, uh, Jensen. We could actually build more houses-
Right.
On the two hundred plus acres of land, but instead we're, we're building fewer houses, so there'll be less density, uh, in the development.
So we're not looking at, um, with a zero lot line? So we're looking like a real neighborhood that has the, when I say, you know, that has the yard and the backyard and the front yard, kind of what's out there now?
That's correct.
And then, my second question was, I, and it might be to the mayor. Um, I know that you had talked about people that travel. How many people is it that travel to Raleigh-Durham a day? We did that statistic that's already going on right now. Did I hear like thirty-five hundred?
DOT has confirmed that, uh, over three thousand people leave Fayetteville and go to Raleigh for work, for commute daily.
Every morning, yes. So, okay, so then I'm gonna, just bear with me, 'cause it is out where I grew up and it is gonna affect everybody out there and it's, it's a new normal. It's gonna be a new normal for us. And for the record, I totally agree on multi, um, the, the multifamily housing. I totally agree on that. Um, we don't want apartments out there. I mean, I will say that. We have enough apartments on the north side of town. We, we don't need anymore. So I'm hoping that they will be nice townhomes or they will be like the homes that are across from Long Hill where they have, that is called multifamily, um, housing too. The, um, other thing, I had one other thing. Oh, for DOT, my understanding is that it is gonna be a six-lane road going out there? That that was funded about a year ago? Do, is that correct? Is that not correct? Do we know anything about that?
I'm unfamiliar that it's gonna be six lanes. I do know from what I shared with you that they plan to have that as part of their strategic, they call it Strategic Transportation Corridor, which they've created north, south, east, west roads that they say that these roads eventually have to be improved. So whether it's, uh, two lanes, four lanes, six lanes, at some point, um, that road, four oh one, is identified, uh, from Fayetteville heading north, uh, to be improved as a strategic road.
So my, my understanding is at a meeting that I was at probably a year ago that it is going to go all the way up that way, the six lanes with the medians. Um, that's all I have for right now. Thank you. Oh, and then I do wanna say one other thing and I just wanna reiterate. If we vote this down, it is going to be built. The county has already approved it and they will go by county standards to build their homes. Is that correct? They, they can go by county standards and not Fayetteville city standards of building homes?
That's correct.
And our standards are more strict than the county standards. Is that fair statement?
I'd say they're good standards. I don't know.
Yes, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Colleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't know if General or, or Mr. Charleston can answer this. Uh, to surmise what, uh, Councilwoman Jensen just went over, we have three hundred and fifty single-family homes in the first two phases of development that are going in, correct?
First three, yes.
And in the third phase, we're looking at three hundred and fifty multifamily units going in?
Correct. They've identified those as the years, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine, not knowing when or type.
And what type? Do we have any clarification as to what type of multifamily? Are we talking about apartments? Are we talking about townhomes? Are they gonna be for rent, for sale?
Um, none of those items are included in the conditions that went through, uh, with the county and therefore they're not, they haven't been carried through. We haven't heard anything and what I was, uh, told by the applicant, the attorney can certainly, uh, answer this on behalf of the applicant. But when we were discussing this, they don't know what type, nor do they, uh, know price points, nor would we get into price points with them. The type of single, uh, the type of multifamily though, could be elderly, uh, which is a growing market. It could be townhomes. It could be one-story. It could be two, three. We don't have those details. They don't have those details. They just know that they need to get to a certain spot in terms of rooftops-
See what the market might bear.
Before they determine that.
So with that, then what, do we have any idea what the current, uh, home values are, average that surround this, uh, new development?
I, I do not. You could, uh, potentially ask some of those who are here what their home values are, who've, uh, spoken, but I don't know.
Is it safe to say they're two hundred and fifty or under?
Uh, it's safe to say that many of them that are in that area are lower and there's also ones that are in the unincorporated area north and west that are higher.
Okay, so this isn't, uh, basing off what the developer's telling us and the projected home value, sale values of two fifty to four hundred would be a complement of home values in that area?
It would be complementing it and it also is an indication of the type of homes that they've built, that the developer has built in our community over the past-
And the type of multifamily going in the center of those higher home values then would probably also complement that?
Yes, and certainly the fact that it's one developer who wouldn't want to create their own toxic environment of creating something that doesn't work is part of what they would be working through in their overall development plan.
And this developer has a long history of, uh, doing developments within the city of Fayetteville. Is that correct?
It is.
And can we know some of those neighborhoods maybe so we can get an comparison of what we're talking about, what type of, uh, developments they've done in the past, if these are gonna be similar or comparative to that?
Thank you, members of council. Uh, Don Broadwell, I'm president of Broadwell Land Company. Um, other neighborhoods we've done would be, uh, Greystone, Fairfield, um, Blakefield, Kingsford, South Kingsford, uh, Summertime, you know, numerous, numerous neighborhoods.
Okay, and the home values of those neighborhoods are, uh, higher than the average of the city's, uh, values? The ones I'm familiar with?
Well, I mean, I'm going over a thirty, my career, thirty years, the company, forty or fifty years, so, you know, wide, wide range of values.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Colleton. You have a question and then I'll go to Councilmember Waddell. Uh, Mr. Charleston, um, some of the speakers had talked about, uh, disturbance of wetlands and some other, uh, federal or state licensing. Uh, you, you're, I'm sure that you're ensuring your client is compli- compliant with state and federal law with wetlands and the wildlife licensure issues that were referenced, right?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, absolutely. In, in fact, the, uh, my client's gonna be governed by the terms of the development agreement, which says that they have to comply with all applicable laws. And so absolutely, we'll comply with all the laws and permitting processes and things of that nature.
Okay, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Polvin. I am, I'm reminded as we're having this conversation about a request that came before us in terms of low-income apartments being placed in a neighborhood. And I don't remember the level of conversation in that situation as the conversation that we're having now. And there were some very similar concerns that were expressed. There were concerns about apartments coming into a community with homes. In fact, those apartments were gonna be right behind people's homes who had lived there for a number of years. And it concerns me that in this case, our questions are, what are the values of the homes going to be? Um, what, what are you planning on building? And none of those questions were necessarily posed at the time that this other situation transpired. And I just want to, um, first I wanna say to the homeowners in the area, I understand your concern. Nobody buys a home in a rural area hoping that it will become a bustling city area. It just doesn't happen. Um, and I, I thank you for acknowledging that you recognize that growth is taking place. I think that one of the things we should be very clear about is once an area is zoned a particular way, this council has no autonomy over what a builder decides to do with their land. They own it. Our responsibility is to make sure that the impact to the, to the, to the, to the area is not a negative one. And so when you ask the question, what are we going to do for you and you speak about water issues? What the city does is we have standards in place that are supposed to ensure that a builder who comes into your community to build, builds in a manner that does not create a nega- a negative impact on your home and the area that you live in in terms of the water runoff. So when you talk about the trade-off, that's the trade-off of city versus county standard. So, um, I just wanna say to my colleagues, I wish that some of these questions would have been asked when we were talking about a different community and a different situation with apartments coming in. Um, I'm glad to hear this robust conversation and I hope that we continue to be mindful in this way when other communities come before us and we're, and they're looking at this type of development taking place. Um, and, and I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. I did wanna, wanna put one point of clarity out there. Uh, if I recall, in the last, in this discussion, uh, I think it was mentioned as one of the points of argument that values were being impacted, which is very important for the council. So I don't think that we made a distinction, but the arguments, uh, that were raised in this one were different from the ones in the last one. And so one of the speakers, I'm, I'm not sure which one, stated that, uh, that there would be some negative impact on values and I think that's how, how that conversation came. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that, that was, that was clarified, but appreciate the comments. Councilmember Wright and Art?
Oh, yes, I just have a, a few questions, uh, and this would probably go to Mr. Newton first. Um, there were some concerns about the two lanes and I know that there were, um, information given, but I'm not clear. As far as DOT and the plan to widen those roads, what, what are we, what are we looking at, um, in the near future for that to happen?
Councilmember Wright, I, um, apologize for not having exactly what DOT's plans are for that. I know that they've identified it on the Strategic Corridor that they intend to have. We heard from a gentleman earlier that they were making, uh, road improvements, uh, into their subdivision. That does not, that's not tied to this. I do know that this one is directly tied to a traffic impact study that was done where they looked at traffic impact and require lane improvements for their access into this location. The predominant access points coming in will not be on four oh one. They'll make the turn off of that, which is the way that the state generally looks at wanting to see residential developments. They don't want them on their major corridors. They try to limit those access points. They don't want them on their major corridors. They try to limit those access points. So Elliott Bridge Road is the location where DOT has indicated, and these are your access points, and these are your improvements. But they completed what's called a TIA that looks at what the traffic analysis should be and will have to comply with the state standards for improvements.
So, so is that, those standards or the direction that you're going with, the extension of the road lanes, is that something that the city looked at and did approve?
Yes, we-
The future plans?
Yes, sir. What we did was we looked at what was submitted at the county. Those are still enforced by DOT and took that in consideration when Technical Review Committee also looked at this.
Okay. Well, the question also was about the wildlife. There were some comments made about what the woodpeckers and the wildlife and the trees, and, and I was satisfied with the, with the response from the attorney that you're covering those items and making sure that all those things are taken care of. And I wanted to kind of respond to the requests from Councilwoman Waddell concerning the conversations that we had on pre, the previous project. I think it's a different scenario, and the price per resident will bring up the value of the land in the county. And I agree that when you talk about expansion and growth, we do be, we do buy our homes, especially in the county, with the sense of being in the country. We're growing as a city, and unfortunately, growth sometimes hit us at a time when we least expect it. But I'm hearing that all the impact that will happen in that area will be a positive impact, and the growth out there will even benefit the residents that's out there now. Water that's going out there will impact that we can have economic, economic impact and development in the future. And so what we talked about in, in the projects previously with those type of units that were going out on Clifdel Road, we don't know what those multifamily housing would look like in two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-nine, if those numbers are correct. But I'm eager to hear that. Now, if we vote for this project at this point, do we have any say-so in the future as what's going to be put out there as far as multifamily housing? Do they have to come back to us or not?
No, the only time that they would be back in front of you is if they look to make a major modification to the project.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Newton, thank you very much for your presentation. You've said growth is going to occur out here regardless of what this council decides tonight. That's a fact, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this site plan, as all site plans, it, it was engineered and reviewed, and it had to be approved by the Corps of Engineers. Is that correct?
That's correct, and they, they, part of that process includes delineating of wetlands.
And, and, and the Corps of Engineers is very stringent on delineation of, of wetlands. That's been my experience. Is that an accurate statement?
Sure is.
Okay. And so as the project, and as the project continues, they'll be coming out to check the project. Is that a, is that a valid assumption?
That's correct.
Okay. And this plant, this plan, as they, they, they designed it, is really a smart growth plan i- in that it's single-family, multifamily, and it includes a school. And my understanding, that land's already been given to the county. The, the benefit of the school, will that be just to the neighborhood or the adjacent neighborhoods?
It would be the benefit to that, that region, to that area, that they would, it wouldn't be just, it couldn't be tied just to this project.
And that's kind of a standard now in smart growth neighborhoods that are being developed, to have a school put into the neighborhood, the service of ne, a neighborhood of this size and complexity.
Right. And, and this would include pedestrian access over to that planned elementary school area.
And, and, and you can confirm for everybody tonight, the city standard for development is more stringent than the county standard for development in that we have greater requirements for, for different codes, sidewalks, and that type of stuff. That's, that's a fact. Is that correct?
If you force me to say they're more stringent, I guess I'll say, yes, they're more stringent.
No, well, they, well, they are. They are. And so, and then, and along with that-
They, they represent the standards that the city has indicated that they want for the city. So yes, they are a higher standard that we have in certain parts.
Well, whi, which is important, to have those higher standards because in the experience of this city and this county, over the last several decades, we've had various communities that have come into the city that weren't built to city standards, and that's been very costly for the city taxpayers to try to provide services to them. Is that, is that a correct statement?
That's correct, and that's part of what we were doing for five months, trying to work through those issues, because they have a right, if they're not in the city, to go ahead and put it to a different, lesser standard. But to work with them to come in and build it to the higher standards.
So with that, fire, water, sewer, all that'll be available. But for people up the 401 corridor who, who are, you know, don't currently have water or sewer, if they elected to have water or sewer, that would be available to them?
That's correct.
Yeah, because there's some issues with soils perking out there and septic tanks, as I'm, I've been informed. Is that correct?
It's very poor soil types through that area.
Okay. But to come into the city, they would have to voluntarily ask to be annexed, and water and sewer will be provided?
Correct.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. The, the benefit of doing this, though, provides not only controlled growth for this neighborhood, but it allows for the shaping of future controlled growth along this major corridor, the 401 corridor. Is that an accurate statement?
That's accurate, and it also begins to put in place what the city council proceeding, several of you looked at doing and saying, we identify this area to the north as an area that we say should be our northern boundary right now. Let's look at that area, and let's look at the potential of what will happen. So to the smart growth opportunity, if I can expand on an earlier question that you had asked, by locating a, a clustered location that the state has identified that, that's called R, RULAC, Regional Land Use Group, has identified as an urban core to create a pocket of good development to allow other areas to then be able to have serviceable locations. This puts in all of those things.
And what we know from RULAC is when that occurs, it generally has a positive benefit to the surrounding properties in proximity to that, that urban development. Is that correct?
So whether or not we're in the city or in the unincorporated area, the city of Fayetteville doesn't look to create negative standards for any adjoining properties.
Yeah, Mr. Newton, I, I want to, I want to thank you for your, your, your comments and information. And, and I just want to add, the developments that have been developed by this developer, and I, I mean, I've looked at this very hard, these developers have done a really nice job on the developments they've done. And I think with the, with the agreement that has been developed by, this development agreement that we have in place, I think it will do a good job of protecting this property. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilmember Art. Councilmember Dawkins, did I see your light?
I was just ready for the public hearing to be closed.
Oh, we've closed it. It's time to, time to get to it. Councilmember Jensen, did I see your light?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that being said, you know, before I make my motion, I just do want to, I do want to reiterate that no matter what we decide up here, it is going to be built out there. It has been approved by the county. So the decision is, is it going to be approved, is it going to be built to county standards, or is it going to be built to city standards? And that's basically where we are in this whole project. And we all know that the city standards are more strict than the hi, higher, the, I was trying to be nice. The city standards are higher than the county standards are for building. So I think that we are all in agreement of that. So with that being said, as my computer just stopped, I'm going to make the motion. I would like to make a motion to approve the review of the proposed development agreement between the city and the Broadwell Land Company for the proposed two hundred and fifty-four acre development located on the southwest quadrant of Elliott Bridge Road, Elliott Farm Road, and Ramsey Street.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. There's a motion on the floor. It's a second by Councilmember Art. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, could we add to that, that we authorize the ma, the city manager to execute the development agreement?
I will accept that.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion. As stated, authorizing the execution of the agreement by the city manager, second by Councilmember Art. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, council, look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item eight point zero one, eight point zero two, consideration for a petition for annexation. Mr. Newton, long time no see.
Thank you, sir. The next item that you are to now consider in this process is whether or not you will accept the petition for voluntary satellite annexation. Statute requires that you have a public hearing with the effective date, and as we've just heard and gone through, it ties into the zoning and the initial zoning that transfers over, ties to the development agreement. It also is tied to the service of sewer from PWC, and it allows public services to be determined. As you mentioned before in the questioning, I think it was Councilmember Crisp asked whether or not we could involuntarily annex a spot. This is not what's in front of you. It's their request, and it's an impact for future development of that area, as we've talked. Several of you have brought up the points. This will be consistent with three points of the city council and prior city council positions, that if in your, the municipal influence area, then annex. Two, if in that MIA, and it's the northern boundary, then go ahead and annex. And three, in February, where the council said, we don't want a part of it, we want you to work to get all of it and bring it all in, therefore annex. And as you've heard several times, the project occurs whether or not it's in the city. As a result of that, the recommendation is that you adopt the proposed ordinance of annexation of the property with an effective date of October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. That coordinates the different components. That concludes the staff presentation. If you'll open and close your public hearing, and again, reserve questions till after the public hearing. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right. With that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have one speaker in favor and the same four in opposition. Our first speaker is Mr. Jonathan Charleston.
Mr. Mayor and council, on behalf of Broadwell Land Company, we respectfully request your consider approval of the petition for annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the next speaker?
I think they've departed, actually, but I'll read the names. Miss, Mr. Dennis Delong, Mr. Paul Bracewell, Mr. Jimmy Jones, and Mr. Waverly Sledge. We have no further speakers, ma'am.
With that, we will close the public hearing. Mr. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we can, we, I'd like a motion that we are in favor of consideration of a petition of annexation from the Broadwell Land Company.
With, with an effective date of twenty-two October?
With an effective date of October twenty-second.
We have a light from the attorney. I have a question.
So, Mayor, just to clarify, it would be to adopt the proposed ordinance, annexing the property, and I think someone said the date, which is October the twenty-second.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So there was a motion by Councilmember Jensen, as described, is a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to take a quick moment to thank PWC. I don't know if Mark Brown's here or not, but these, hey, no, okay, I would thank the PWC for being here because they have worked on this project for many months. And what this amounts to is those areas that are not a part of the city, if they want to get PWC water, which is very good water, and their sewer services, which is excellent, they can then petition to be annexed. Some of these houses, I think Mr. Newton pointed out, maybe Councilmember Art pointed out, some of the septic tanks in these areas that we're, we're going to go three miles out. A lot of folks may want to jump on the sewer and then ask to be annexed. And it's going to be, it's going to be fabulous, once again, for the north side. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank PWC specifically as the liaison.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can we restate the motion for clarity, please?
Sure.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Jensen, if you could?
Yes. I move that the city council moves to adopt the proposed ordinance annexing the area effective October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, and establish the initial zoning consent, consistent with the prior action of the, on the zoning case, and enter into the development agreement, consistent with the prior action on the development agreement.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion by Councilmember Jensen, second by Councilmember Wright. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, council, look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk? That is unanimous. Item eight point zero three, council, you want to take a, take us a five-minute break? Are you good?
But this is quasi-judicial. She has to, has to get everything presented. It's a special use.
Hmm. So we need a, need someone to get Councilmember Jensen. This is a quasi-judicial item, and I think she, okay. All right. Let's give a brief recess for five minutes. Let's give a brief recess for five minutes. Five minutes, two seconds, my friend. All right, counsel, we will, uh, call the city council meeting to order, but give us, God Sergeant Major, he's coming in now. All right, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. This fir, this next case is a quasi-judicial hearing for a special use permit, so we do need the speakers to come up front to be sworn in before we get started.
May we just have one speaker, Mr. Mike Cooney? Do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next case is a special use permit request, as I mentioned. This is for a communications tower. It's currently located in a community commercial zoning district at eighteen-seventy-six Bureau Drive in District Two. Staff and zoning commission, both did recommend approval. Just to give you a little idea of where the property is located, Cedar Creek Road is here in the north corner of the, the prop, of the screen here. Just to the right of that would be I-295. This is at the end of Bureau Drive. You've got the Holiday Inn Ninety-five out there, and Ruby Tuesday's just, just in, in front of this particular property. As you can see, the property is surrounded on three sides by woods and farmland, and then a vacant piece of commercial property there to the north. The area in red is the area in the city that is zoned for community commercial, and that, everything else on that particular slide is within the county's jurisdiction, anything that's outside of the red. This is just a little look from the Cedar Creek Road, looking down Bureau Drive, the property in question is way here in the back. You can see the sign for the Holiday Inn there, just to the left. What the applicant is proposing in this particular case is not the typical monopole cell tower that we usually see. This is a, a three-sided tower. This also a trap, yes. It also is not the typical cell tower that we see, in that that is not the communications equipment that will be on it. There is, there may be some cell tower space that they run out, but the main purpose of this particular tower is for Beasley broadcasting, and so it is not a typical cell tower, it is actually a broadcast tower. And their engineer has signed up to speak, and he can, will be able to answer any technical questions when he is up here for you. One of the things that they had, this is a hundred-and-ninety-five-foot tower request, and one of the things they are also asking for is reduction in their setbacks. As you can see, there are two buildings already on this particular property, and so they're a little constrained as to where the tower can go. So, they are looking for, like I said, a reduction here to the west and to the south, and as you saw on that aerial photo a while ago, both of those areas are farmlands, woodlands, and actually some wetlands as well. So, they're, they're not in an area where they could cause much harm should the tower fall. They do have a couple of simulations of the tower. The first in your left-hand corner is from Cedar Creek Road, and you can see the tower here in the background, and then the second is right here on, is from the Holiday Inn, and the tower is actually getting cut off right here. Let me fix that. So, the tower is actually right here, and that would be the view from the Holiday Inn parking lot. Conditions, as usual, this would have to comply with that attached site plan, final approval and review of the TRC, and including that reduction in the tower setbacks. Again, zoning commission and staff both recommend approval. The tower would be create, located in a commercial area away from other development, that they would have the reduction in that setback, that the proposal meets all of the other standards of the city, other than that setback, if granted the condition listed above. The proposal does meet the specific standards of the city, and we feel that it does meet all eight findings of fact required for a special use permit. That's all we have as a presentation at the moment, Mr. Mayor. If you'll hold your comments or questions for staff till after your public hearing.
Thank you, sir. So, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you could call your first speaker?
May we just have one speaker for this item, Mr. Mike Cooney?
Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to see us, and I'm really here just to answer your questions. I, I don't have anything formal that I wanna present, but just more to answer any concerns or questions you may have.
Thank you. So, this time, we will, we will close the public hearing, all right? If you can, I had the light off, guys, so if you had a question. All right, Councilmember Dawkins, and then Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir, for being here. Would you give us your address?
Yes, fifty-three forty Hawthorne Woods Way, Naples, Florida.
So, you came up from Naples, Florida?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Secondly, Craig had mentioned about cellphone, the cellphone area, or the cellphone service out there is not all that wonderful. So, my question was, would you be able to rent or allow for companies to possibly rent space on your tower to improve the cellphone service?
Yes, that's one of the, the key purposes of this tower, is we knew that, you know, we like to limit the number of towers, and cities typically do, so this tower's designed to be extra-heavy to handle, up to two cell carriers in addition to what we currently will need. Most of our stuff needs to be at the top of this tower, and so we have some space lower.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir. My question is based around safety, and we're looking at the towers there, and I was looking at the drawing that shows both buildings, and you want to have a little setback for, based upon the, you know, the tightness of the area around it. My question is, wha, what is the wind velocity of the tower? We've had some strong winds come through here, hurricanes lately, and you being out of Florida, I know you probably...
Yeah, this, this tower meets what's called the current G standard, which is the highest standard there is for wind. It, it will easily, this, these are, this is a really, really heavy-duty tower, and there's a reason why we use that instead of a monopole. The great thing about this type of tower also is it, it can't really fall over, it's more like saying a building's gonna fall over because of the nature of it. The worst thing that could happen is the top few feet could kink over, and, but it's never gonna fall on someone's property or on our own building, and it's, if, this tower would easily take a hundred-and-fifty mile an hour wind or greater, even with, even with ice on it.
All right, great, great. I noticed that there are, it's inside of a parking lot in there, they were showing on the, the photos, that there's, there were some parking spaces on that photo, if you'd go back and look at that, but you kinda helped me out with that, based on the design of the pole or the tower itself, that we would have no concerns with that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had some concerns expressed to me, is, can you go over if there's any known health risk or, or consequences with a tower like this, and if so, what is the radius of, of somebody living within proximity to it?
Sure, that's, I've been through these a few times before, and that's always a big concern. This tower is not a, a tower that's one of our broadcast towers, which, we have towers that do cause, you know, can potentially cause harm, and that's when, you know, we have stuff that ranges in real high-power applications. Those are all located in remote areas, and this particular tower, to give you an idea, one of our big signals, Foxy ninety-nine, is a hundred thousand watts, this thing will transmit less than two watts, and so there's literally no, no harmful radiation whatsoever that comes off this.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Councilman Crisp?
How you keep somebody climbing up that tower? Is it gonna be closed in at the base so some drunk fella can't decide he wants to go up and do a parachute landing fall or something?
No, that's, that's a good question. Yeah, we're going to fence, this property will be a fenced property eventually, which will come in a later permit application. There will be fencing around the back of the parking lot, and that's where our station vehicles will also be stored, and it'll be electric gate with high fencing.
Thank you, Councilman Crisp. Councilman Hare?
Sir, I thought you, I was gonna let you get by, but you said something, and it brought something to my mind, I guess probably more for me than any member. A hundred-and-fifty feet? Sort of tell me, how is that constructed? Is that so much of that, that pole itself in the ground, or is it the concrete and it's connected with, with their boats? Tell me how?
It's a really expensive tower, about five times as expensive as a monopole, and it's, it's designed out of, it's designed out of solid steel legs, it'd be three legs, and then there's cross members, steel cross members that tie across it, so it's a kind of an X-type situation. And it's, there's three drilled piers for the foundation that are about fifty feet down into bedrock. The foundations alone are almost two-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's, the, the, what they're gonna be connected to is gonna be about fifty feet per leg in the ground?
Yeah, cement, thirty-six inches in diameter, yeah.
All right, thanks, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, counsel, I think we have addressed it, so we'll look to you for some form of action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we move to approve the special use permit to allow the communications tower and the commercial, community commercial district that's presented by staff, based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing, and the application is consistent with applicable plans, because, one, the development is located in a heavy commercial district, and, two, that this use complies with the findings listed in, I'm sorry, findings listed below, and, three, the proposed permit is in public interest, because the proposal of the special use permit does fit within the character of this area. If approved, this special use permit shall become effective ten days after the approval by city council, which is November first, two thousand eighteen. The special use permit shall expire one year from its effect, effective date, if a building permit is not issued within that time, and also consistent with eight findings of fact that are contained within our legislative packet.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Cullerton, there's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, motion carries. All right, item eight point zero four, stormwater ordinance variance request, Wiseman Chromatory. Seems like we've seen this item two, three, ten times, huh?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am presenting to you tonight a variance request that we have received for the vacant property at the corner of Hillsboro and, and Edros, Edwar Street, which is proposed to be the new home of the Wiseman Chromatorium. The city's stormwater ordinance requires that the installation of stormwater control measures when one of these two things occur. Either you have an existing development that is adding more than five thousand square feet of impervious area, or you have a new development that is adding at least twenty thousand square feet of impervious area. Under those two conditions, this stormwater ordinance requires that stormwater control measures are installed. When I say stormwater control measures, a lot of people typically refer that to ponds. We use the general term of stormwater control measure, because it is more encompassing than just ponds, because it also includes underwater detention facilities and some other things like permeable pavement and stuff like that. On this case, Wiseman Chromatorium site is currently vacant with a small gravel patch that used to be the driveway for a house that was there prior to the ordinance, and it was, the house was removed, and the remnants of that driveway was left in place, and that is considered, in accordance, that, that is characterized by definition of the ordinance as a redevelopment, because of the presence of that small patch of impervious area. That small patch of impervious area accounts to about maybe five percent of the actual property. Given those conditions, the owner of the Wiseman Chromatorium is requesting that a variance be granted for this site, so that the site will be considered a new development, which will be allotted twenty thousand square feet of, for a threshold, instead of a redevelopment for the five thousand threshold. Let me show you a map that has the location of this particular property, they are highlighted by the red lines. It is three, three small lots that altogether come to point-four-six acres. So, all, all three of those lots is only just a hair over twenty thousand square feet. Here is another picture. Hopefully, you can see over in this area, that's the remnants of that driveway, that over time, a little bit of grass has grown into it, but based on the tests that we have done on site, it is, is, it is considered impervious, 'cause it's not, does not allow any water to go through. Staff has met with the owner and the owner's engineers to review the options for this development before we arrive at the decision that the variance was potentially the best option for them. There have been several stormwater control measures considered for this particular site, however, the soil conditions do not support the majority of those measures. For example, the soil, the soil conditions do not support the potential for underground detention, which forces them to have an above-ground, or let's say, a wet detention pond, which will take room from their only twenty thousand square feet of area to develop, and when you add that up to the different requ- And when you add that up to the different requirements of, of having setbacks and having the other requirements of the U D O, it will actually render this potential property not feasible to be developed. So the existing site sits across from the applicant's current business, and is bounded on both sides by, by the street. And also, it's got an existing church, as you can see on this particular property, this particular picture, there is, is bounded on both sides by the church. So they don't have any options to purchase any additional land to be able to meet the stormwater requirements. So after multiple meetings, site visits, records researched, and a thorough review of the proposed variance, staff recommends the approval of the variance, which will facilitate the economic development of this property. We have not received any detailed plans yet for this particular property, but when those plans are provided to us, we will make sure that we'll review the plans in accordance with the city's requirements and enforce council decision made tonight. So that is the variance request that we have at hand. I will be glad to answer any questions after the public hearing.
All right, so this time, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we just have one speaker in favor, Mr. Tyrus Clayton.
Hello, my name is Tyrus Clayton. I'm with Draper Aiden Associates, the engineer for the project. Our office is located at 225 Green Street, Fayetteville here. I did want to speak, that we, we've already gone through a special use permit process for this particular property. And at that hearing, we only had people come in, in support of this project. We didn't have any opposition at that time. They've been part of that community for over forty years with existing business and providing a very valuable service to the community. Gisele did a very good job of presenting our case to you of why we've gone this route. We have done quite a bit of research and can really not figure out a, a way to incorporate any kind of stormwater controls that would make this project actually feasible. I'm here today to answer any questions you may have about our designs or the project site, as the engineer for the project.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
All right, this time, we will close the public hearing. Do have a couple of questions, Councilmember Crisp and then Art.
Mr. Engineer, come back up there, please. I mean, I just wanna get this thing clear in my mind.
Yes, sir.
I'm very familiar with that property. My understand, first of all, we have already approved the erection of a crematorium there.
Yes, sir.
This issue tonight is for a variance because, one, it is not feasible to put an underground re, water, stormwater containment, right?
That is correct.
And if we put an above-ground retention pond, it will require so much of the area that there will be no area left to erect a crematorium, is that right?
That is correct. It would...
And this essentially is the reason they're asking for a variance to allow them to do this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Art?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, sir, for, for being here. The special use permit you had, when was that issued?
I believe it was earlier this year. I cannot remember the exact date, but it was in 2018.
Okay, so it's got a lifespan of twelve months, and the reason I'm asking is, based off of the special use permit, you have to draw everything within that year? You're gonna be able to meet that timeframe with this variance?
Yes, we've got a full set of plans already generated. We've been through TRC review with the count, with the, I'm screwed, with the city. Those drawings have, actually, we've continued with that design, anticipating the possible variance being granted so that we actually can, we've actually resubmitted some of those drawings already to the city for review.
Okay, and then city staff, we're gonna be able to make sure that this can be done within that, the remaining time period on that special use permit so they don't have to come back and ask for an extension?
If the site is, if the variance is approved today, this site will be considered exempt from the stormwater ordinance, so the review process is very straightforward. So yes, we will do everything we can to make sure that we meet that timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counsel, I guess it's time to take some action, as I'll make my comments at the end of this. All right, so, any other questions? All right, Counsel, entertain a motion.
Yes, sir, I was letting the...
Councilmember Cullerton, I think it was...
Right, I was just looking at him and, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion. I move to approve item 8.04, 18-478, Stormwater Ordinance Variance Request of the Wiseman Crematorium, as staff has indicated.
I second that motion, sir.
Okay, there's a motion by, that one? Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Cullerton, I, I was, it was a second by Councilmember Hare. I had a, any further discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, motion carries. Comments I was gonna make, Counsel, at the end of this month, we have a special meeting on stormwater. This is one of the items that we need to consider. You know, we had a gravel driveway that went to something that is no longer there. So how many projects like this are we dealing with in our city? So needs to be some consistency. But, uh, thank you, staff, thank you, Counsel, and with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Right, y'all have a good night.